Board of Education meeting, July 29th, 2021, 6:30. John, take attendance.
Everyone is here except for Michelle.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now it's time for public comment. Public comment, which will be timed by Howard Barron, will be limited to three minutes. We will call an order of submission of the blue cards. And I'll just read this. It's on the back of the blue cards. Each person will have to speak here up to three minutes. Where a number of speakers per topic exceeds the limit, each person-
One more, could you take the microphone a little closer?
Thanks, Howard. I'm sure no one can hear me. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education must identify themselves by name and address via public comment request card. When addressing the Board, we ask that you please take into consideration the rules of the common courtesy. The Board may question speakers but may not answer speakers or make statements or comments. Public comment is not intended for dialogue. Complaints shall first be considered through the proper channels before presenting to the Board. The Board shall not hear complaints at an open meeting about a named district personnel unless a named person requests the Board to hear the complaint in an open session. With that, the first public comment is Jessica. Blue. Okay. Right there. Yep.
Hello, my name is Jessica Billy. My seven-year-old will be returning to Conan in the fall for second grade. I come to you not only as a concerned parent, but as a registered nurse of 14 years. It is imperative that until every age group, including those under 12, are able to get their full vaccination, masks should be mandatory in school. We are so close to getting where we need to be, but we have to work together to protect our most vulnerable at a time when the Delta variant is predominantly making its way through the United States. At 83% of all cases, and 97% of these severe cases are in the unvaccinated. The Delta variant is 60% more contagious than the Alpha, leaving you with a higher risk for hospitalization, even for people who are partially vaccinated. I don't believe that asking the district to make masks mandatory until everyone has their fair chances asking too much. To teach empathy to children and to protect others is not something that is new to us. The district prohibits peanut or nut products from lunches and before school for breakfast to protect those who are allergic. I wouldn't question it for a second, and neither would my child, as he knows it could severely hurt others. I care just as much about protecting your children as I do mine. The experts of the AAP, the CDC, and now the MDHHS are all stating that masks should be worn in the school setting, regardless of vaccination status. This is due to the fact that breakthrough infections will happen, unfortunately, and we have to use those mitigation strategies to help prevent the spread. If we ignore what the experts are saying, then what are we even doing? If we are the healthcare heroes, why isn't anyone taking our advice? Although our state and county are currently doing relatively well with vaccination rates and cases, we know that come fall, it can be very different with the intermixing of kids in school. Let's be proactive and not reactive. Let's not wait until even one child is in ICU on a ventilator, or suffering with MISC, or blood coagulation problems in the hospital, or worse, death. One child would be too many. I don't want this to be any of our children. The healthcare heroes are working tirelessly to protect and save lives. They know the science. They are the experts. Please trust them. Thank you.
Holly.
Good evening. My name is Holly Battersby. I have three children in the district, all under eight, and all too young to be vaccinated. I was stunned when I read the district email that masking would not be required to return to school in June. It was very premature, and it acted as if COVID is over. We all know that it is not. All I want is for my children to be safe when they return to school. It's so basic. I've asked so many questions, but I still cannot understand why our district will not enforce such a simple public health precaution. Wearing masks amidst a pandemic to prevent the spread of disease to our children who can't vaccinate. I've been told that at least at this point, because the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the Oakland County Health Department will not force the district to mask, the district will not require it on its own. This is poor logic. The voices of the experts are loud, and they are consistent. The Center for Disease Control, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, the American Association of Pediatrics, the World Health Organization unanimously advised that masking is the right call for our unvaccinated kids in the classroom. Why are we ignoring this advice? Specifically, the MDHHS, which the district turns to as its health experts, recommends, quote, "correctly and consistently using well-fitted masks to cover the nose and mouth." Just last week, the MDHHS director announced, quote, "I would expect and encourage schools, when they go back, to have mask requirements for kids younger than 12, and those who have not been vaccinated." I cannot understand why Bloomfield Hills schools would do anything short of that expectation. The MDHHS has also mandated masks on school buses, which makes it clear that they are still extremely important in the fight against COVID-19, especially in Bloomfield, where we know we cannot effectively social distance because our buildings can't accommodate it, especially with the return of many virtual students this fall. We cannot afford to take masks away from our kids. It appears that vaccinations for those under 12 are on the horizon. With that knowledge, that we are so close, we need to keep masks in place. We know what it takes to keep our kids safe, and it's such a simple ask: wear masks. If there's anything we've learned over the last 16 months, it's that masking works, as long as everyone who is unvaccinated does it. Listen to the experts. Follow the science and logic. Protect our kids. I truly appreciate your time and attention.
Jennifer Geringer.
Hello, my name's Jennifer Geringer. I have three children in the district. Never in my life did I think I would see a day when parents would protest against recommendations from the AAP and CDC made to help keep their children healthy and alive. Health organizations who have weighed the risks and rewards of mask-wearing in school, whose recommendations are bolstered by every nationally-recognized health expert in the country. They have mountains of real medical data backing them that the stay-at-home moms, accountants, real estate agents, and speech pathologists arguing against them don't have. Simply being a child's parent does not qualify any of us to know better than the medical experts when in the midst of a global pandemic. This is why we take our children to doctors. Many argue that this situation has been politicized. Politicalization happens when people don't want to listen to recommendations and say, "Make me." As a public school district, you are charged with providing the safest possible environment for children. By ignoring public health recommendations, you are taking a political stance when you say, "Make us." Our school community is diverse in color, culture, and medical history. I am not going to stand here and tell you the vaccination statistics, the number of cases, about the science proving that universal masking is best, or refute the junk science that they are dangerous. I am going to trust that you have enough common sense to research reliable sources. I am going to tell you about specific children in the community that unmasked children will directly affect. Over the past several weeks, I have spoken to parents of children with cerebral palsy, autoimmune disorders, chronic lung disease, heart conditions, cancer, and more. Children who have been on ventilators for weeks or months. Another who was mere minutes from needing ECMO. And while many children are perfectly healthy, even they are not immune to severe COVID complications. Not all families can afford the luxury of taking their children's health for granted. We, their community, get to decide who we want to be for them. Isn't the right thing to teach our kids that it's okay to put on a mask to help another child remain healthy, to help all children receive an in-person equitable education, especially those who have already been dealt a difficult hand? As IB schools, we teach community responsibility, empathy for others, and a commitment to helping all children in the school community. Allowing families to unmask, failing to protect every child in the community, and simply saying, "They can go to Bloomfield Virtual," does not uphold that IB message. Why should the children who follow recommendations, who do the right thing, who are willing to mask up to protect their community, be the ones forced into an alternate learning environment? Masking up is not just an opportunity to teach IB lessons, but to practice them. Our children are watching us. Let's lead by example and show them what it looks like to be good, responsible people. Thank you.
Karsha.
Hi, I'm Carissa Kwasniewski, mother of a first and third grader. Like many of you, virtual school is not a viable option for our family this year. Ignoring the safety recommendations of our experts to mask indoors invites outbreaks that could push us back into virtual or hybrid learning, something none of us want. The Michigan Department of Health has already made masking on buses mandatory. Why would we wait until we already have an outbreak to make masking in school buildings a requirement? Outbreaks were largely prevented last year with the combination of masking and social distancing at Bloomfield Hills schools. When approximately 30% of students return it to in-person learning, much of that distancing will be infeasible, especially in our smaller elementary schools. Children under 12 will face a triple threat: the more contagious Delta variant, limited distancing, and no approved vaccine for them. Some students and family members face additional risk from being immune compromised. They may outwardly appear like a completely healthy person. You probably know some, even if you're not aware of it. I myself am immunosuppressed, putting me at risk of contracting and dying from COVID higher than most, although I am vaccinated. How would you feel if a friend in your child's class lost a parent, the cornerstone of their support network, and it was preventable? How would you feel if a child in their class had lifelong lung damage from COVID, and it was preventable? How would you feel if their immune-compromised teacher died, and it was preventable? More importantly, how would your child feel? Every single one of us is tired of wearing masks, but if it saves even one family suffering these effects, it will be well worth the inconvenience. Science has proven that masking works, and a clear correlation exists between the number of people wearing masks and their effectiveness in preventing the spread of COVID. We are here to ask the Board to please take a stand for our kids and our community by making indoor masking mandatory this fall, not because it's required, but because protecting each other is the right thing to do. We're counting on Bloomfield Hills Schools' leadership to keep our children safe. Thanks for your time.
Erin. Erin Fisher.
Which Erin? E or A?
Erin Fisher Cohen.
Hi, everybody. My name's Erin. I have two kids, one going into third grade, one going into kindergarten. I believe everybody here on every side of this issue has the same thing at heart. We have the best interests of our kids at heart. None of us, or at least most of us, are not experts, but we should listen to the experts. The CDC, the AAP, and MDHHS are all recommending masking for kids up to 12 years old who can't get vaccinated yet. They also recommend highly in-person school, which I know we all want to get back to. I just, let's keep our kids healthy and in school. Wouldn't it be a shame if we didn't enforce masks and there was an outbreak, throwing everything into confusion again, sending kids home, canceling classes? That's it. I just want to be brief. Thanks.
Vaish. Last name S.R.
Vaish has asked me to read for her. She is here.
It's fine.
Or one of you could read if you'd prefer.
You can read it. That's fine.
Okay. Vaccination numbers are at 63% for Oakland County residents over 12 years of age, but our kids in elementary school and some grades in middle school are not. 100% of them are not. Delta variant is throwing a wrench into vaccine efficiency, as is evidenced by the current trend in rising numbers all over the world bracing for a third wave. Delta variant affects people regardless of age or vaccination status. Oakland County Health Department metrics as of July 22nd report 6.7 cases per 10,000 people, not 100,000, 10,000, in the Bloomfield Hills School District alone, putting us in the moderate transmission zone. As per the same group of decision-makers last school year, following the same set of metrics, Bloomfield Hills School District required mask mandates for in-person schooling and offered a virtual academy staffed completely by BHS teachers. The Delta variant has been cited as being twice as contagious as the Alpha variant was seen last spring. A single case can cause a deadly outbreak when mingling unmasked and unvaccinated in schools. We are a family with an immunocompromised parent who doesn't have antibodies in spite of being vaccinated. If our kids bring home the virus from school, the cause of potential devastating circumstances in our household, including the death of a parent, will be attributed to the negligence of the esteemed school district officials and Board members in not following the strong recommendations of federal and state health organizations. All healthcare experts are strongly recommending masking when indoors, irrespective of vaccination status. I want to return to normal, too. I want my kids to go back to school in person and flourish in the company of actual contact with their teachers and friends. We stayed virtual last year to do our part in being cautious and safe, but we want freedom, too. We want to have the choice to send our kids safely to school as well. Virtual is not an option for us this year, especially with your current plan to outsource teachers and combine grade levels. Make masks mandatory until the kids have had a choice to be vaccinated. Protect the future generations from needless misery caused by politicized decision-making. Listen to the healthcare experts. Honor the Bloomfield Hills District's mission of serving the community with integrity and ensuring a bright future for our children. Thank you.
Pradeep.
Everybody, thank you. My name is Pradeep Kiamanulu. I've lived in this district for about five years now. My eldest daughter attends Conan, and one of my other daughters will be attending Young Fives this fall. In addition to being a parent, I'm also a physician. I'm an internal medicine physician who specializes in the care of hospitalized patients. And over the last year, I've taken care of several hundreds of hospitalized COVID patients. I'm here today to ask the Board to instate a mask mandate for our students for this upcoming school year. And I hope that what I've said gives my opinion some weight. I think as parents and as the school board, one of our primary responsibilities is ensuring a safe environment for our students. If we look at the community right now, we can see that COVID numbers are starting to rise again ever so slightly. We have the opportunity now to be proactive rather than reactive, and we also have the luxury of looking back on a year of experience to see what has worked and what hasn't worked. And we know from looking at that that masks have worked and social distancing has worked. Burying our heads in the sand, unfortunately, doesn't work, and our masks and social distancing 100% effective, they're not. We know that, but they certainly do help. I promise you that they do. And they're relatively easy to implement, and they don't cause any harm. The current COVID numbers we see right now are mimicking exactly what was seen last summer, and this was before anybody was vaccinated. If you look at that, it's undoubt, there's no doubt in my mind and many of my colleagues that we're going to see another surge in the fall. Without a mask mandate, without our students wearing masks, we are putting many of our students at risk of getting sick. Some of those students will become ill and have to be hospitalized, and some of them will unfortunately die. The question that has come up many times over this year, and that comes up now, is how many deaths are acceptable? When it comes to our children, the answer is, is, and should be, zero. So, my question is, are you willing to sacrifice your children or our children for an attempt to delay wearing masks for a little while? I don't think any of us want to do that. It's not only, it doesn't only stop there, though. The students that contract COVID then go out into the community and spread it to their family, their loved ones, and everybody else. So it puts people who are vaccinated and unvaccinated at risk. And those people will become ill, and they'll be hospitalized, and they could die as well. I think we're at a very important juncture, and I think we need to make a decision. It has to be the right decision. We can't wait for other institutions to make it for us. Because by then, it's probably going to be too late. I understand the hesitancy to instate a mask mandate. I myself am obviously tired of wearing masks and wearing PPE for over a year, and I'm tired of everything that's going on, but the reality is, we cannot, this is not the time to ignore those things. If we don't choose to mandate masks now at the starting of the school year, we'll undoubtedly be shutting down our schools again in the fall when the second, this new surge comes. And we'll be doing virtual all over again. I don't think anybody wants that. The choice should not be a difficult one, and I don't, I know it's hard, but we shouldn't give into the pressure of people who are misinformed and that want to make this a political issue. It's not a political issue. It's a public health and safety issue. I would ask that we listen to the experts, and as many people have said, there are many institutions recommending masks right now. And not only listening to the experts, but listening to those of us who are in the hospital, taking care of, I'm sure many people here, loved ones and family members, while they suffered and died in the hospital. I am. Thank you. And so, I'm asking you to, and I urge you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Erin Rogers.
It's me.
What?
Also, I'm not a doctor, so I don't know if I can follow that, but my name's Erin Rogers. I'll have two sons at Lone Pine this year, a third grader and an incoming kindergartner. Last year, we were enrolled in Bloomfield Virtual. BV, at least for us, was meant to be a stopgap. It was meant to be a time while we waited to get adults vaccinated, especially teachers, while we learned more about the disease, and while we figured out a logical and safe plan for a full return to school. We told our kids that the adults were figuring out the plan for all kids to return to school safely. They're ecstatic about being able to go back to school, especially ride the bus, because it's all they've ever wanted in their whole lives. My husband and I felt comfortable telling them that they could, assuming masking would be required, considering the guidance from multiple authorities. However, it sounds like masks may not be required in the fall despite the guidance from these sources, unless the school is forced to require them due to a mandate from MDHHS. While I certainly hope that MDHHS will mandate masks, I would urge the school administration to consider requiring them regardless of an official mandate because it's an easy and effective way to keep our kids safe. We know we can't eliminate the risk entirely. We know social distancing will be challenging to achieve this year with more children coming back in person, but we should control what we can. We can control continuing to teach good hygiene and hand washing. We can control not sending our kids to school when they're ill, and we can control the reduction of spread through masking with the support of the administrative team. These are the things that will help us minimize the risk of any child becoming ill. Mandatory masking is also more inclusive than optional masking. Without mandatory masking, there will be many families who will not be able to send their children to school in person due to serious health concerns, limiting the inclusivity that I know is so important here in Bloomfield Hills Schools. If our goal is to get all children back to school full-time, we should support mandatory masking. In closing, I would ask the administrative team to please honor the fifth pillar of our district's Portrait of a Learner, which is a disposition toward taking responsible action. And take responsible action to give our children and staff the best chance of health by requiring masks in the fall. Thank you.
Laura Schulman.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Laura Schulman, and I'm here tonight as a concerned Bloomfield parent. I have a repeating kindergartner starting at Lone Pine in the fall. She's repeating because when the district went virtual for two months, my husband and I pulled her out of the district and found a private kindergarten with a mask mandate, and she never got sick. Virtual was not an option for her learning ability, even though her Bloomfield teachers did an amazing job presenting the lessons. My repeating kindergartner's name is Stella. She's a fighting miracle. She's a triplet, born at 23 weeks, 16 and a half weeks early. Sorry, I'm getting emotional. She weighed one and a half pounds. Her brother lived for 14 days. Stella and her sister fought from birth to be a part of this world. They spent four and a half months fighting for their lives and came home on oxygen for another four months. At 11 months old, when we thought our kids were healthy, Stella spent 28 days in the PICU. This is Stella, at 11 months old, for 28 days. She had a virus called the metapneumovirus. I still don't understand what the heck that means, but it attacked her lungs. She was even on an oscillator for several days, which is far more invasive than a ventilator. Stella and her surviving sister are in R6 and have chronic lung disease, cerebral palsy, mild asthma, cognitive and speech delays. When Stella and her sister get a cold, they're hit 10 times harder than the other kids. I'm talking 105 fevers, inhalers, multiple visits to the pediatrician and the ER, in addition to missing, on average, two weeks of school and therapies. I bet many of you watching in here tonight, in this room, have not lost a child and have not watched your child nearly die from a virus for 28 days. This is why I'm here. I've lived a nightmare. I cannot, and will not, sorry, people are texting me, put my child or your children in harm's way. I will not send my child to school without a required mask mandate and implemented precautions from this deadly disease. One child lost is too much. Who's going to be responsible for the mask option? Teachers? They cannot be responsible to learn which young child is supposed to be masked by their parent's choice. If masks are required on buses, they need to be required in the classrooms. If the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics recommend masks in ages two and older in schools, why are some parents concerned and frightened that you guys will not make a mask mandate in our district? My child's protection is all that I can do against this virus until I have the option to vaccinate. This is Stella today, simply happy to be in school, making friends while wearing a mask. I will do everything in my power to keep my daughter safe and your children. You should do the same for mine. Please take students' lives and safety at the forefront of this decision for a district-wide mask mandate temporarily until vaccinations are available for our children. Thank you.
Laura Retton.
Good evening. Many of you know me and have spoken with me over the last 13, 14 months. My husband and I have six children. We've been living in the district for nearly 20 years. Our youngest daughter is about to be a senior at BHS. We also have two grandchildren in the district, one at East Hills and one at Eastover. Okay, this is going to be tough, but stick with me, okay? I wanted, I came here to commend you for your decision to make masks optional for our kids and our families this year. I think we've been through it before. But where we are right now in the pandemic is we know where the problem is. The problem is in the air. It's in the air in this room. It's in the air in classrooms. We understand it. We know how it transmits. We know much more than we did before. Given that indoor air is the problem, we need to make that what we solve. We've been asking our kids for months and months to take on the bulk of the responsibility of the mitigation strategy. We've asked them to mask. We've asked them to hybrid and online learn. We've asked them to stay away from their friends. We've asked them to quarantine if someone they're sitting by is sick. We've encouraged vaccination for these children, which may not be an option for many of them and may not even be advisable. I mean, this is a brand-new technology. This is something that has no long-term safety data. So to look at that as the end game and say, "Let's wear the masks till we can get the kids vaccinated," I don't think is a viable option. What we need to do is solve the problem in the air, and we can do it. There is technology available. Royal Oak Schools has embarked on a massive, full district, every building, every classroom. They're in the middle of installing it right now, HVAC UVC. HVAC UVC is a decades-old technology. It is absolutely safe. It is what is used in hospital operating rooms and has been since the 1960s to keep the air disinfected. We need to move beyond where we are. You've put it out there. You've said, "We're doing proper ventilation." Royal Oak Schools is knocking it out of the park, I'm telling you. They put out all this information. They're telling their parents pages and pages of, "This is what we're doing. This is how we're doing it. This is how we're keeping your kids safe." And even though I think they went above and beyond over the last school year with all of this, they are still taking on the next step. They have very old buildings. It's an incredibly difficult install for them to do, and they're doing it. They're committed to it. They want those kids in schools, and they want them to not have to wear masks. If we can get to that step- If we can get to that step, we can keep all of your kids healthy, all of them. Everyone can be healthy, and it's not just COVID. We are not just talking COVID, we're talking colds, we're talking flus, we are talking strep, we are talking everything that every child drags home by the third week of September every year. These kids can be healthier than they've ever been while they're in our buildings, and I think they deserve that opportunity. The writing is on the wall, the other parents have said it, I can see it.
Can you see the writing?
Yep, we're gonna hit that point in a couple of months. What I want to wrap up with is really just, I think, a mission statement for where we are right now. I would like to see Bloomfield Hills committed to exceeding MDHHS and OCHD ventilation standards by providing UVC sanitized air in all our facilities for the cognitive and health benefits of all our students. By prioritizing air disinfection to combat COVID-19 and other airborne viruses and allergens, our students can learn and socialize in an optimally safe and healthy environment, free of masks and other limiting mitigation efforts. Thank you.
Libby Levine.
I did not know about this meeting until a couple of hours ago, so I did not have anything in writing, but I do have a grandson that is in the school district. We have lived in this district since 1987. Again, I'm sorry, my name is Libby Levine, and we put our daughter through this district, and she wants to put her children through the district as well, since we all know how wonderful Bloomfield Hills is. I'm coming as a grandparent, and I urge you to please consider having a mask mandate. I have seen so many of my contemporaries become ill. We all know also with the summer and a bunch of kids going away to camp and coming back, you realize that there is going to be a surge of COVID cases. Unfortunately, this has happened to a friend of mine, where the grandson had to come home, he was sick, infected the whole family, and this is gonna happen, it's not rocket science. And with that, again, I please, as a concerned grandparent, I urge y'all to please change your minds and reconsider what all of the healthcare officials are saying, and do a mask mandate. Now, what the last lady did say with the air and the ventilation, boy, yes, I am all for that too, but we all know that's not gonna happen by September. So, again, I urge y'all, please, and do the right thing for everybody's health. And I will say one more thing, I happen to use your restrooms in here, and there are signs all up in that restroom saying regarding germs, how to wash your hands, you know, and how to do it properly. Well, if you're that concerned about the germs and spreading the germs, let's be equally concerned about our children going back to school. Thank you.
Alexis.
Hi, good evening. My name's Alexis Strakopoulos, I'm the mother of three, two school-aged children and a toddler. I did prepare something, but after listening to everybody speak, I'm going to modify a little bit, because I don't think, I'm just gonna modify it a little bit. I am here to also commend you on your decision to allow a mask optional policy. My children are currently not enrolled in Bloomfield Hills schools, we were in private last year due to circumstances. Private school does not fit in our budget. We were, our goal was to use it for a year, get through the year, put them back in Bloomfield Hills. At this point, we have not enrolled, I don't know what to do. I will say, and this is what I did not write down that's important to me, is that my children, although at a smaller school last year, because it was a private school, were not masked. My children were masked in public areas, they were masked in computer class, they were masked in the hallway, they did do lunch in the cafeteria, obviously unmasked, not within, no social distancing. They also did lunch outside, they also did lunch in their rooms, so they didn't have all the kids together at times, they had a way that they figured out to mitigate this thing. There were four cases all year, four cases. So while I absolutely support the mask optional policy, I feel for the parents that came and spoke, the people who have lost children, the people who also don't want to send their children back without there being masks, because I don't want to send my children back with there being masks. So I can relate on a different level. So I think what I'm saying, it's totally, I mean, it changed everything, but I think what I'm saying is that what worked for my kids and my kids' school last year was very feasible, and it was, wear a mask on the bus, walking into school, sit down at your desk, that mask comes off, because it is all day, and these are little kids, and they have now spent what is a third of their life in this COVID situation. And when does, you know, everybody says the children are resilient, they'll get over, but when is it enough? I don't know, I don't have the answer. I know that I saw my children in the spring of 2019, you know, definitely suffering, I had a kindergartner, a rising kindergartner, so that's why, a lot of the reason why we chose to find a school that was gonna offer in-person learning. And they really, they were able to thrive last year, and they were able to spend every day from August until June in school, every single day, happy, smiling, talking, and there, and you know, there were no masks, there just weren't, aside from the public areas. And I think that that's a fair ask, and it wasn't what I originally came here to say, but I do think that it's a fair ask. It's an easy way to mitigate, you know, to know who's around, to know who was maybe unmasked together, but I, that's my suggestion at this point. Thank you very much.
Angela.
Hi, I am Angela Vose, and I also thank you all for what you've been doing, it's been a nightmarish year for everyone. I would like to say I do support the pro-choice of masks, and I do appreciate you putting that forward, at least for now, hopefully it stays and remains that way. It's not fun listening to these people's stories, my story is different, and I had a child in the hospital as well over the holidays, and that's due to the stress of COVID and the stress of wearing a mask and things like that. So the mental health of our children really has to be considered as well as the threat of COVID itself. So, there's a lot of kids that were in hospitals over the course of the year in inpatient facilities, and we can't ignore them. You know, why is one person's child more important than another person's child? I think we're all serious about taking these risks seriously, making sure the schools are safe, so anything we can do, but some children just can't wear the masks, and that has to be a choice, and it's not meant to be an F-U to anybody or a political statement, but it's truly like something that has to be considered for all children. Thanks.
Suzie.
I just wanted to start off by saying thank you Superintendent Watson and the Board of Education for your recent policies making masks optional. I think we can all agree that 2020 and a lot of 2021 were a bit of a disaster. Vaccines were unavailable to most, in-person learning was halftime at best, and despite some of the most restrictive mask mandates and rules, Michigan was one of the worst states for COVID infections. I don't think we can forget that. Well, good news, it's not 2020 anymore. As of today, depending on what percentage or what age you want to cut it off at, Oakland County has surpassed a 60% vaccination rate. In fact, I looked at the Troy Schools email that they sent out with their mask optional policy, and in our area alone, we're close to 90% vaccinated. Michigan is no longer one of the worst states for COVID infections, instead, we're actually one of the best right now, we're one of the lowest. I understand that some people are calling for mask mandates again, but please stand your ground. Children are currently attending summer camps, summer school, indoor wedding receptions, crowded restaurants, trampoline parks, et cetera, without mask mandates. It doesn't make sense to have school be the lone exception. Every eligible person has had and will continue to have access to the vaccine. Right now, a parent can make a choice to enroll their child in, for in-person learning or virtual. A parent can make a choice to homeschool, attend private school, or seek schooling in another district. Every parent should have a choice whether or not to send their kid to school wearing a mask. Do not return to the overreaching and overreactive policies of 2020, we're not in the same set of circumstances. They have no place here, Bloomfield families deserve better. Please continue to protect our right to have a choice. Thank you.
Maya.
My name's Maya Pitts, I have a daughter who is at the high school, rising junior, and a son who is a rising eighth grader at BHMSS. I just want to say thank you to Superintendent Watson for releasing a policy on June 30th that puts the decision on whether to mask or not in the individual family's hands. We personally did not have a good experience having to go to school with a mask. My son would come home every day with a headache, we tried different masks, disposable, neoprene, cloth, and he would still come home with a headache. He drank lots of water and ate a healthy lunch, and nothing helped. At home, no headache. However, our experience is not the same as everyone else's. It should be an individual decision based on one's own personal beliefs and circumstances. So thank you again for recognizing this and putting the choice to mask in our hands. Thank you.
Valerie.
Hi, good evening, I'm Valerie Eckert. I am a 20-year resident of the district, I have four children in the schools, and I want to thank you for making masks an option for our family. It's been a very hard time for us, and I also believe in the choice, that that shouldn't be taken away. Everybody's had an option along the way, everybody still has an option, and our family appreciates that. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I think the last year and a half's been totally crazy, and I know that you had to make a lot of decisions that were super hard. I've watched all the meetings, heard all of it, so I know that choices came to you that shouldn't have had to come to you, in my opinion, things that you shouldn't have had to decide were in front of you, and I run a large business kind of segment outside of here, and I say that at work a lot of times. The past year and a half has led me to have to make decisions that I never thought I'd have to be a part of and do things that, I don't know, just never came into the realm of possibility of work that I was doing. Sometime last year, we had decided that we were going to take our kids out of Bloomfield and move to a private school, because we just wanted our kids, education's super important to us, I have a seventh grader, a fifth grader, and a first grader, and it was super hard, and that wasn't anyone's fault, it's, everybody had a personal choice and a reason they were gonna do it. We went through it, we moved to Bloomfield three years ago on purpose, because we wanted to be here, we're one of the schools here, so I love it, I can't say thank you enough. The teachers here, my personal accolades a lot, love the teachers here, love everything about it. When we told our kids earlier this summer that they had a choice of where they wanted to go to school in the fall, we left that choice up to them, come back to Bloomfield, enroll in the private school that they were accepted to, part of it did come down to the masks, because it is about the social aspect to them, and seeing smiles, I guess, I would say, my kindergartner, I think, I have no idea how a kindergartner teacher heard a kid the whole year with a mask on, but that's a separate issue, I don't know how they possibly did that with the soft-spoken children. But I appreciate earlier this summer you telling us that families were gonna give a choice, get a choice, and I hope that you can stay with that, I understand that someday it might not be a choice, but until it can't be a choice, I hope it can be. We teach our kids at home, same way I told them, they could choose where they went to school if we gave them good options, we say the same thing about the masking, or the same thing about the vaccination, I want my kids to be a part of this, I want them to know how to make good decisions for themselves and in this community, so I appreciate that, and I think we're trying to teach them to be independent thinkers, just like you're pushing, you know, and supporting in the district, so thank you for the choice, and I hope that we can have a choice until we can't have a choice.
Good evening, my name is Charles Gaba. I grew up and went through the Bloomfield Hills School system myself, I'm a proud graduate of the former Hickory Grove Elementary, the soon-to-be former East Hills Middle School, and the former Loser High School, class of 88. My wife and I moved back to Bloomfield Hills about 12 years ago, specifically so that our son could have a Bloomfield Hills School experience. He's 15 years old, he's gonna be a sophomore here at BHHS in just about five weeks, I believe. I'm here tonight to strongly urge the board and Superintendent Watson to, not only to mandate mask-wearing for all adults and students within BHS buildings, whether vaccinated or not, but as well as for all adults and, if possible, I realize this may be difficult, but if possible, all students 12 years or older to be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 in order to enter school grounds, because if we want to lose this, as many people as possible must become fully vaccinated. I don't know the exact COVID vaccination levels within the Birmingham/Bloomfield area, someone said something about 90%, which I find difficult to believe, seeing as how about 15% of the population are under 12 to begin with, I assume that's adults only or what have you. But I do know that at the county level, only 55% of the total population has been fully vaccinated to date, and statewide, only 49% has been. This is better than some states and a lot of counties, but it's worse than others, and regardless of how we relate to other counties or states, what matters is how it relates to the herd immunity threshold. Thankfully, my wife, son, and I are all among those numbers, we've all been fully vaccinated, and I certainly hope that every member of the board, as well as everyone present today, is as well. Unfortunately, leading public health officials and epidemiologists have stated that with the surge of the Delta variant of COVID-19 cases, so-called herd immunity will likely require anywhere from 80 to 85% of a given population to be fully vaccinated in order to stop the spread of the disease, and that even fully vaccinated individuals could possibly still spread COVID-19 to others, even if they remain asymptomatic themselves. While Oakland County is currently only listed as having a moderate level of community transmission by the CDC, I pray that I'm wrong, but I strongly suspect that it's only a matter of time before it joins the more than 2,200 counties out of around 3,100 nationally, which are currently rated either high or substantial. Just this week, the Centers for Disease Control stated that, quote, "Given new evidence on the Delta variant, CDC has updated their guidance for fully vaccinated people. CDC now recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to K-12 schools, regardless of vaccination status. Children should return to full-time in-person learning in the fall with layered prevention strategies in place." Regarding vaccination requirement, Bloomfield Hills schools have long mandated immunizations for numerous other communicable diseases, such as diphtheria, tetanus, polio, measles, mumps, rubella, chickenpox, and hepatitis, and I'm sure there's a few others I've missed.
Can you wrap it up?
Yes. There's no valid reason why COVID-19 shouldn't be added to this list for students 12 and older, as well as for younger students, once the FDA has authorized them. And regarding the COVID vaccines not currently having so-called full authorization, just a few days ago, the US Justice Department stated that public agencies and private businesses have the full right to require COVID-19 vaccinations for all employees, even if the vaccines have only emergency use authorization. Yes. We're still very much in the middle of an emergency. We're still very much in the middle of an emergency, and I would ask everyone to mask up and vax up. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Harris Singh. I have two children in the district, BHHS and BHMS. So first, and I'll keep it real simple. It's good to see everyone in person. Actually, I thought most of you guys were just in YouTube. Just three points. One is thank you for the progress you guys have made in the last seven months. I think the board is really focused on the governance, the strategy, policy, and the accountability, right? So, the board just stick with that and then leave the management to the administration. I think that we've seen the progress, the community's seen the progress, and we really appreciate it. Second, the mask optional, I'm very supportive of the mask optional. I think it reflects the community situation in terms of the 70% vaccination rates, and it also reflects the state requirements that we have, which we don't have for masks. And, you know, I just think that, you know, we should really focus on the children's education. Because really, the third point is, in the area where we have kind of the resources and the choices for education, I'm a big proponent of public schools, and I want to stay that way, right? And I think that we should really focus on the children's education, and we should really make Bloomfield Hills competitive with everyone in the area, whether it's public or private. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm JJ Stumpian, and I wanted to say that masks don't prevent the spread of viruses, and they are not effective against COVID. And that is because the virus is so small, it can get through. So, that is not the reason, that is not an effective prevention against COVID at all. And there are no studies that show that masks work against the prevention of COVID. So, they don't make a difference, except that they do cause harm, including neurological and psychological harm. They cause respiratory infections, bacterial infections, rashes, and so the masks just aren't really making a difference. What's making a difference is that we are in an endemic now, and now we're seeing variants, but COVID-19, I mean, we're in the green, the virus has run its course, and there's always going to be variants. We're going to have more variants to come, even after the Delta variant. Good doctors are recommending against masks, and they're recommending many effective therapies to prevent and cure COVID and boost the immune system. I'd also like to say that there is a school called Novi Christian Academy. They are less than 10 miles away. They were in school full-time, in-person, all year last year, from September to May, and they had no masks and no social distancing all year indoors. And they experienced no outbreaks, no hospitalizations among any students or staff, and no deaths, of course. They had very few cases, and those children were just sent home to go get better and come back when they were better. And they did no quarantining either. So, they had a very successful school year compared to how our school year went. I have three kids. I failed to mention, I have a freshman in high school and an incoming eighth grader and an incoming fifth grader, and my, all my kids were just so lonely and distraught with being forced to be virtual and being forced to wear masks, or they can't talk, they can't see anyone's facial expressions, they can't hug their teacher. It's so unhealthy, and it's just so unnecessary for these kids who really are at no risk of death. If you look at the studies, if you look at the science, you know, there's a 99.99% recovery rate with no treatment at all. Our kids have spent the entire summer going to Defy and Chuck E. Cheese and the mall and indoor parties, weddings, and so forth with no masks and no social distancing, and we have no cases. No cases that I, that, you know, maybe a case here or there, but, I mean, there is no outbreaks. Our kids are healthy, and they're all fine. We are, like I said, no longer in a pandemic. I also have several links. There's a study on the CDC website, which reviewed 10 different randomized clinical trials worldwide, reviewing, okay, reviewing highly infectious respiratory virus transmissions, which found, quote, "No significant reduction in transmission and use of face masks." The World Health Organization states there is, quote, "No evidence wearing a mask by a healthy person can prevent infection with respiratory viruses." The British Medical Journal, it goes on and on for four pages, and I will send this to you. So, in closing, I just wanted to say thank you for giving us a choice to take responsibility for our own kids' health and for their total health and well-being, not just preventing one simple, you know, COVID, but preventing all the health. And one more quick thing, thank you for not mandating vaccines because the COVID vaccine has caused more side effects and deaths than all other vaccines combined. And a friend of, okay, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Yana Ben Ezra. I wasn't prepared to speak. I just wanted to say thank you for the progress that you've made so far, and thank you for allowing us to have a choice on whether or not we send our kids to school with a mask.
Any other? Okay, we'll close public comment. We'll go to President's Report. So, a couple of points I wanted to make clear, because I know there's been some confusion. The decision to wear a mask falls under an operational decision that the board has delegated to the superintendent and his team. All operation decisions are made by the superintendent. I know some of you out there want to know how this is different than last year going back to school, where the board voted on the issue. If you recall, there was an executive order that each month the board had to approve per the executive order of the Continuous Learning Plan, so that decision fell under board governance, and we needed to vote. The other questions regarding public comment, as some of you know, our broad practice is only to have public comment live at our meetings. The change to virtual public comment last year was based on the governor's executive order allowing that. Once the executive order lapsed, so did our public comment being virtual. And just a couple of other things. So, we all just came for our second groundbreaking ceremony at BHMS. Later tonight, Paul Wills, our owner's rep from Plant Moran, will be providing an update on the bond, and we are glad to report that we are on time and actually under budget. Finally, on 8/18 at 2 o'clock at the farm, we'll be honoring our retirees from the district for the last two years. All are invited to come. And then on 8/27 in the afternoon at the high school, we'll be having our first-ever district-wide back-to-school welcome event leading up to the football game that evening. Hopefully, all of you can rest and enjoy the rest of the summer. With that, I will pass it over to Superintendent Watson for the superintendent report.
Thank you, President Cohen. I'm going to repeat some of the things he said because they're on my list as well. Some of it's like the group project that we didn't do together. Annual registration opens up this week, so please fill it out. We're trying to get stacking and data so that-
We can kind of move forward. Beyond excited for our new developmental kindergarten program. We'll have two different sites, one at Eastover, one at Lone Pine. So, if you have a child that turns five between September 1st and December 1st, developmental kindergarten is a great opportunity. If you would like more information about it, feel free to reach out. We only have spots for 17 students in each location. We have over 700 students participating in our summer learning opportunities. Hiring update, we've filled 27 positions since the last board meeting. We have other open positions out there. If anyone is watching, is looking for a job, whether as a teacher, a para, a bus driver, a bus driver, a bus driver, a bus driver.
Got it.
Thank you, Trustee Baron. We desperately need help. I know last year, there was a lot of frustration with parents because we weren't able to provide the same type of pickup spots or pickup locations for our younger students, and we're pretty much in the same boat this year, based on the number of drivers we have and the stops we would need to go to. So, can you use some help there? Retiree celebration is going to be at the farm on August 18th. Looking forward to that as well. Again, a couple other ones that I'm repeating. The PTOC Welcome Back Event, first time in the history of Bloomfield Hills Schools. We're doing a district-wide Welcome Back Event. It will be at Bloomfield Hills High School from 4:00 to 7:00. There will be a dunk tank. I will be in the dunk tank to begin with from 4:00 to 4:30, so feel free to show up and dunk me. I will-
I'm sure board members are there. They would get a lot of-
Looking for some additional administrators that might be willing to go in the dunk tank. So, if you're an administrator, Mike Cowdery, and you're willing to go into the dunk tank, would love to have you there. I think it'll be a great time for the kids with some different activities. And then it's the home opening football game for our Blackhawk Football Team. They're taking on Berkeley, and, you know, we really want, you know, all roads lead to the high school, right? So, we want everyone that is in Bloomfield Hills Schools to go to Bloomfield Hills High School and not look at an independent school or somewhere else. I look at our graduation rate, which is almost 100%. I look at us being, you know, one of the top feeders to the University of Michigan. Over 50% of our graduating class got into Michigan and Michigan State. The majority also get into their number-one university. So, I don't know how you measure that. I don't know what report that comes out about that, but I can tell you, as a parent of three, and my youngest just graduated high school, to me, it was like a business decision. The bottom line, where are they going to college? And the bottom line is, without having to pay additional funds, our students get into some of the best universities, not in the United States, but in the world, period. Also with the bond program, again, a huge thank you to the community for supporting the bond. It's going to do amazing things for our students. I know there was some angst about whether or not it would pass and things that have happened prior, so glad everything went well. And kind of like President Cohen said, we're on schedule for the fall of 2023. I think it's also important to note that even though everyone will be in their building, there will still be some construction going on in the fall of 2023 in some of the buildings, and that we're on budget, right? We're not spending $3, $4, $5, $6, $8 million over what we have planned. I think that's important as well. And I'll turn it over to President Cohen.
Thanks, Superintendent Watson. With that, we will go to administrative appointments.
Back at you. I'm thrilled to be here tonight to introduce our new associate principal to the IA Oak Ma campus, Dr. Ezra Ali. She will stay there just for a sec. Dr. Ali comes to us in a way that is, she's so prepared to take on this challenge of the IA. As you know, I have a special love and affinity for the IA after my seven years there, and being part of her interview process was so impressive and amazing. She has a bachelor's degree from U of M Dearborn, a master's of education from Wayne State University, an ed specialist from Wayne State University, and a PhD in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from Wayne State University. Dr. Ali has 22 years of experience in education, including being a principal, a chief academic officer, and a teacher. She also has extensive knowledge, passion, and joy in the world of IB, and so we're so excited for her to bring that to the IA. She is here with her husband and her two children. Her children are leaving and going off to college, so she has decided that in her empty nest days, that she's going to take on the new IA students and embrace them into her home as well. She is dedicated to equity and inclusion for all students and connects with an open mind, a warm heart, and sincere guidance, and we all look forward to learning from and working with Dr. Ali. Why don't you come on up?
Can I get a motion?
I believe Dr. Ezra Ali will be appointed to associate head of the International Academy. The date will be effective August 23rd, 2021.
Second. Support by Howard Baron. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations. I'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, respected board members, President Cohen. It truly is an honor to stand here this evening in front of you and accept this position, so thank you for the appointment. Sarah, thank you for a lovely introduction. I just wanted to share a couple of things about myself because I know I'm new to the district, and I really believe in the human connection, and I think, you know, the first time we meet, I want to leave an impression. And I want you to remember that as I start my new journey, there are five things that I've always embraced as a leader, as a mother, and as a teacher, and really, you know, believed that in every aspect where a challenge or an opportunity is presented to me, these are the five Gs. So, don't look it up. It's not official, and it's not research-based, but these are my five Gs. And this is something that I'm committed to, and this is something that I will exude as a team member. The first G that I have that I want to share is grace. I will incorporate grace in everything that I do in your district. Gratitude, that's very important to me. I think that it's really important to appreciate what we have and have a positive framework and appreciate the people, the students, the parents, and everything that, you know, we have been given. So, gratitude is something that is always, you know, something that is going to be part of who I am. And you will always hear me saying thank you, and I get very happy when others say thank you to me as well. The third G that I have is grit. I believe in perseverance, and research right now is really pointing towards how important grit is in terms of, you know, future success of our students. Students who persevere and do not give up, you know, during failures are the ones who will achieve more in their lifetimes. So, grit is something that I'm going to model in your organization, and I'm also going to expect the same from my team members and my students and families. And the fourth G is growth mindset. It's really important that we exhibit this as school leaders, that we have a growth mindset, and we are going to always, you know, want the best for our students and accept change and believe in change. And the fifth one is ganas. Don't worry if you don't know what ganas means. I'm sure Superintendent Watson knows what it means. Ganas is desire, a desire to change. It's a Spanish word, and basically, the idea is that when there is a will, there is a way. So, as a problem solver and part of a solution, I will always have that ganas to look for, to have the will to be able to find the way. So, those are my five Gs. I hope you will remember the five Gs, and I hope that I can truly exude that in this organization. I am privileged to have the opportunity to work under the leadership of Superintendent Watson and Ms. Gibson. I'm going to learn a lot from them, and I hope that I'll be a contributing member and a model and an exemplary employee of Bloomfield Hills. Thank you.
Now, our consent agenda. John?
Okay, we've got a handful of things today. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from the closed session of June 24, 2021. Request to approve minutes from the regular meeting of June 24, 2021. Request to approve minutes from the special meeting, board retreat of July 15, 2021. I move that the Board of Education approve the disbursement reports as presented. I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented, and I also move that the shared time agreement with St. Hugo of the Hills Schools for the 2021-2022 school year. That's written poorly. I move that we approve the shared time agreement.
With St. Hugo of the Hills?
With St. Hugo of the Hills for the 2021-2022 school year.
We have support? It's all good. We know what the idea is. Okay? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Consent passes. Special report.
Just sorry, a quick question about this in discussion for Jonathan Ziva, because you're newly elected. Do you know what the shared time agreement is, how that works? Because Tina, could we, could you just give us like two sentences on it?
I-
Thank you.
I mean, you have a bad ear, but I think folks in the bathroom would be upset if I didn't come up and speak with a microphone. See, this is all coming back to me. It was like it was yesterday.
So, our shared time agreement is actually, provides funding per full-time equivalent for non-core classes that the teachers that we employ are teaching the St. Hugo students.
It's a state law that allows public schools-
To provide teachers-
To provide teachers to private schools, either in their district or possibly for some districts outside of the district. But within our district, we have first choice to have the St. Hugos to work with us. And because St. Hugo's is within our district in the city of Bloomfield Hills, I believe, therefore, that's why we have the shared time arrangement. So we get the funding, we hire the teachers, but they actually teach at St. Hugo's. And they are not court instruction, as I remember. Right. So it's not math and English and ELA. It's music, it's art, things like that.
So Jonathan, is that a good enough explanation?
Yeah, I've heard it before.
Do you have a bus driver?
No, but on August 5th, you know, right, at the local mayor near you, we will have a bus driver event, right? With that, we will go to special reports. Paul Wills, owner's rep, give a bond update to the community.
Good evening, President Colin, Superintendent Watson, board members. As part of our engagement, this is our first quarterly update for the Board of Education as well as for community members. And so I was told to be brief, be interested, and then be seated. So we're going to stick to those philosophies going forward. We're going to cover three things this evening relative to that. And we're going to talk first about finances, understanding the Series One and Series Two, what projects are involved with each of those going forward. We'll put a new monitor on there.
Just roll that into the bond.
No, that's fine.
No, you press the offline.
Part of the technology budget.
Yep, that's right. The second part of the presentation will be a construction update. Again, it was great to see everyone at the groundbreaking today at South Hills. A lot of great activity on that. And then obviously, design update for those projects that are coming here to the board accordingly going forward. So as a reminder, the bond was passed in August of 2020. The total bond approval amount is 200,155,000. And Series One was sold in 2020, and a net deposit of $94,045 was deposited. So that is what's called the net construction deposit. I'm actually pleased to announce that after this evening, the board has actually committed dollars of roughly 57.8 million. So coincidentally, you have a requirement within the first year to spend 15%. Well, you're at 61%. So you're actually hitting market with construction dollars faster than most districts do, which is great, which goes with the hard work that has taken place from last year. So Series One is really relative to the design and construction of North Hills, as well as renovation and additions at South Hills Middle Schools, as well as the design and construction of additions at Conant and Waylum Entrees, as well as some of the renovations and site work at East and West Hills. There's also piling for technology and piling for furniture going forward. Series Two, which is going to be anticipated to be sold in '23, is really to finalize the pool addition, or I'm sorry, the renovation of the existing pool there at Loser, which is a brand-new pool basin. It's a very, very neat design, includes some recreational pieces to that as well. And then again, also the renovations for East Hills and West Hills, again, for that fall of '23, and then also the high school. So even people say, well, the high school's new. Keep in mind, it's almost on its seventh year. So again, one of those things that were not part of the original renovations, such as the existing, plus some of the improved athletics, which we're excited about. And through the remainder of Series Two, again, implementation of the piling of furniture and technology going forward. On the backend of Series Two, again, you have the design and construction of the work at Bowers Farm, the IA, the Wing Lake Center, the Nature Center, converting Eastover into the early childhood center. Again, we'll be looking at that in the '24-'25 timeframe. So that's one of those projects that kind of overlaps a little bit of Series One and Series Two. And then the transportation bus garage, and then ultimately, here at the Doyle Booth Center, Fox Hills, and Lone Pine, which again, is still in conversations. And most importantly, the implementation of technology and furniture. So really sticking to the education drives construction mantra going forward. So that's on the financial end. So we're going to transition into construction. So again, it's shortly after the bond passed, there was numerous user group meetings, I know meeting with administrators, FFLA. Construction bidding documents were then put out and reviewed by the board. As you know, a couple of months ago, you took action on the first series of bid documents for North Hills, and tonight is South Hills. So if you've driven by north, you'll see that the ramming foundations is wrapping up, and you're going to start seeing foundations being poured going forward. And of course, what you're going to see here at South or at BHMS over the next two years is going to be phased construction going forward, with the intent that this construction will be done for the fall of '23. So again, some of the four major components, I'm not going to read these specifically, but again, you kind of see the rendering. This is the entrance that's actually facing west, sort of towards the football field. And the pool vestibule is on the right-hand side, along with the classrooming on the left. That's actually a live camera action. This was actually a week and a half ago, so it's just amazing how much work is taking place. So I encourage the community members to actually look at the live cam, the progress. Once, South Hills or BHMS site, we're also going to have a secondary camera for that as well. So you can kind of read.
Is that on the website?
South Hills is not up yet, so.
But the North Hills is on.
Oh yeah, it's live. And actually, I was going to actually pull it up live right now, but it was actually dark, like last night was putting the overall touches. So I thought we'd have one with a little more action with, again, some of the foundation and site work going forward. Transition to South Hills, again, large addition, cafeteriums, really addressing the arts and auditoriums, science room additions, collaboration spaces, special education, which was really important across both middle schools. And then the turf athletic field, as you know, the turf in the fieldhouse will also be there to match what's at North Hills. And obviously, some critical infrastructure going forward. So those projects will be under construction for the next two years. So again, a lot of fun activities now that this year of work is. So if you think about it, it's been a year since the bond passed, and to actually have $57 million being put in place is just a Herculean task, especially when a lot of these were virtual meetings going forward. So transitioning to Conant, East Hills, West Hills, and Way. So again, these will be the four elementary schools when the construction is done. So again, that design process actually started earlier this year, again, with the principals, the user groups, walking through the current facilities. We've actually had a presentation to FFLA, kind of showing where some of the additions are going to be. We know we can come back in August and September, maybe community as a whole, you kind of see some of those updated drawings going forward. We're targeting right now an early bid pack in '22, January, February of 2022, getting ahead of the curve. Again, the nice thing is you're kind of beating that construction, so we don't need all that construction done in one summer. But with the targeted date that all the classrooms would be renovated for the fall of '23. And then the additions, which would be some of the larger group instructional spaces, would be completed for the fall of '24 going forward. For those that may be at home and are looking for some transparency and reporting where we're at overall, if you take a look at the link of the website, it currently takes you to the bond. So again, this is the dashboards that get updated on a monthly basis. And one of the things that we're in the process of working with Communications is updating each of the building details. So now that we have a little more detail on starting dates of construction, anticipation, dollar amounts, we want to put that. So the look will still be the same, but more information's coming from French Associates and from Barton Mallow going forward. So with that, that wraps up our first quarterly report. So again, I am pleased to announce that we are on schedule and under budget. We've had a great bidding environment, which we'll talk about here at the next one. So President Colin and board members.
So I have a, just a, first of all, thank you very, you know, it's been, you know, a relief, and thank you for what the owner's rep is doing, you know, in terms of helping coordinate this, keeping us on time, on budget. I know you've been giving us updates. And to your point, one of the things I know that, you know, we were asking for, or at least talking about the FFLA, is for community members, so if I'm in Way, or I'm in Lone Pine, or I'm in East, oh, I'm sorry, if I'm at Way Elementary, and I want to know exactly the timing of construction, when it's going to impact, you know, so they click on that button, and we're getting updated with Communications is whatever, September 2021, this place, this is where there'll be construction, it'll end this, this is the impact. So thank you very much for listening and again, in doing that.
Absolutely.
I don't have any questions. Howard?
Yeah. Like President Colin was saying, I mean, do we have for, I mean, the middle school north doesn't have any kids on the campus.
Correct.
So we can do construction all the way until September 2023. But for middle school south, there are going to be kids and parents using that building for the next two years. Do we have a month-by-month, or I'm not sure whether this is Superintendent or you, do we have a month-by-month plan so that the parents and the kids know which entrances are going to be open, what the construction is, you know, where, what areas are going to be roped off and they won't be able to use? Is there a way for, or is there, first of all, is there a plan? And then second, how is that going to be communicated to the parents and then to the students?
Can I just, I think you're back on that, because we were just talking about this in the ground.
As you're parking.
So the community members have what I think is a great idea, which is to. Incorporate that information into the principal's weekly updates, which usually gets circulated once a week, so that, you know, it's like, okay, if you're a third-grade parent, you know, you tell your, you know, just be aware that blah, 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 whether it's a hallway or a room or a drop-off, you know, what is happening on a regular basis.
Because I know, the Bloomfield Township Library went through construction about a decade ago, and it took about three to four years. And the entrance kept moving around, and there was construction tape here and then there, as I worked around the building to get it all done, because they never shut down the library, which was great. We need to be able to do, you know, we're going to have the same situation at the middle school south, and we need to be able to tell the parents ahead of time, you know, what the construction, not just on time and on budget.
Right.
Because that's one thing, in terms of from the overall, but on a day-to-day basis, how they are going to actually interface with the building.
Sure. That's actually a great question. So actually, in May, as we're putting together the bidding documents, there are actually some phasing requirements that the contractors have to rely on, so they'll know when to move fences, et cetera. So I really want to commend Mr. English and his staff to really take a hard look at that, to make sure it was convenient for parents, convenient for students, it's not impacting. So yeah, we'll be looking at weekend work, we'll be looking at off-shift work. Again, safety first, I mean, that's one of the nice things about Barton Mallow Builders, they have one of the safest EMR records of most construction managers. So Mr. English has kind of blessed that after this evening's approval. Again, confirm that with those contractors, and then work with the administration team, the communications team.
Thank you.
To get that map. There's actually a four-phase map to show where things are going to be moving.
Yeah, because the parking lots are going to change.
Tennis courts.
Drop-off points are going to be changing.
Football, absolutely. So yeah.
I just wanted to let you know that after groundbreaking, I got a tour of the building of middle school south. And Principal English was, I can't believe how down to a science he has it, when walls will be moved, down to how many windows each classroom has, when the windows will be, have to be shut down, and they'll be windowless. They have chalked out and painted places, and they have temporary walls put up so the students won't hear if there's construction going on. It is, he knows which classes have to move, when.
All I'm saying is that has to be transmitted to the parents.
Yes, but I took for granted all of these little, and Brian Goby told me that this is the largest project Barton Mallow has done in the area where students are not displaced from the building and not located in portables. So I mean, I had no understanding really until I walked through all of the logistics involved in doing this. It's really incredible. So yeah, I mean, to the extent that they can share that, but, you know, it was the stuff that I hadn't even thought of, you know, what kind of window? When will the window, how long will they be without a window? All of it, really, really good work.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Just one comment, Paul. I want to personally thank you. It's beyond obvious and apparent to me that you really care, and you're really invested in this going well for the students.
These are my neighbors.
Yeah. And, you know, everyone knows, you know, I was not on board with having an owner's rep to begin with, and I shared that with you upfront. But I can tell you, it's exceeded my expectations, what you've been able to do.
Appreciate that.
My only ask is that it continues to be you and no one else.
I also want to say that the excitement from Andy Geniak, Randy English, and Brian Goby, you know, longtime administrators and teachers in the district, when we were touring the building, was just palpable. It is going to be an amazing space, and even though Principal English is going to have to move the eighth grade for like the 400th, he's, I mean, it's just, it's the excitement, you can see it on their face. It was just fun to even be able to, for a tiny second, share it with them.
I think the community as a whole should be very, very excited about this bond. And this is a game changer for Bloomfield Hills. I remember after the high school, how many districts said, I want to go see Bloomfield Hills, I want to go see the high school. Now they're going to say, I want to go see how you went from three to two middle schools, how you incorporated transitioning 750 kids, how you built things with, you know, safety and concern. So again, appreciate the comments and look forward to the next quarterly report.
It would be great to have a little thingy, not a huge fancy expensive thingy, but at Welcome Back Day, so that if BHMS parents are sort of filtering through, they have the opportunity to ask questions, what will the, just with this fall, you know, what's going on this fall? What can they expect?
And it's interesting, we've done that with Barton Mallow and French Associates, so they have some graphics, it's a pamphlet that kind of shows that phasing. Again, Mr. English has a chance to see and sign off on it, so he's very, very aware of what's happening. So yeah, we'd want to be able to do something similar to that. And again, from, I know right now, working with Barton Mallow, renovating two high schools with about 3,000 kids in them, so.
I didn't realize that it doesn't, they move, literally move walls.
Yes.
It doesn't feel like a temporary.
No.
At all. I mean, you don't realize that's the end of a hallway and construction's going on the other end of it. It looks like it just stops there, so.
Yep, good stuff.
Howard?
Yeah, I just wanted to second what Superintendent Watson said. When we did the high school, we did not have an owner's rep. And as we've said all the way through the last year and a half, that we're not the healthcare experts, we're not the construction experts. We haven't done this kind of building since the 1960s. So to basically outsource it and have someone, especially who's in the district and who has worked with us in other projects, to offload that so that we can actually run a district at the same time that we're doing all this construction work over the next five to six years. So again, thank you so much, Mr. Wilson.
My pleasure. Thank you.
With that, we will go to general discussion. Seva, finance facilities update.
All right. Quick update on the FFL, from the FFLA committee. We met last Thursday with Plant Moran Crossa, Paul Wills was there. We met with the Barton Mallow team, J.L. French, as well as Rob Durekka, Brian Goby, Mike Cowdery, and of course, Pat and Tina. So quick update on the bond. Paul's already gone through a lot of that detail. The FFLA team has worked through the last few months to develop a reporting format so the board can keep track of spending versus the budget and changes from quarter to quarter, and also manage and monitor contingencies and reserves. So that's finally in place, so the board gets to see a little more detail than what is shared with the community. And we're pretty comfortable, we have it to the detail that's adequate for us to track. The next thing I wanted to say, essentially, of the 94 million in Series One, about 87 million is construction dollars. And of that, as Paul pointed out, 57 million is really meant for the middle schools between North Hills and South Hills. So the bid package has been completed for North Hills and been awarded in its entirety. I think there's maybe 500,000 left. What's coming to the board today is right bid package number four for South Hills Middle School. And with this, all of the awards for the middle schools will be complete. What will be coming in the January, February timeframe are the bid package awards for Conant and Way Elementary. And down the road will be East Hills and West Hills Middle School, which I think will be later next year. So overall, we've made great progress in tracking, we're on time, on budget, and the board is monitoring the fund spend fairly closely. Got a couple of other minor updates, sinking fund, we're in the process of just revising our agreements with J.L. French and Barton Mallow. The language in the existing contracts are up to date, so our legal team is working to revise the language, so that's under process. Another item on sound system updates, I think that's 9D on today's agenda. The sound system in Bloomfield Hills High School is about 15 to 20 years old. It's on its last legs essentially. And Bloomfield Hills, or Loser Middle School, essentially, or I should say, North Hills Middle School, has a similar sound system of the same vintage. So what's coming to the board today is asking for funds of 110,000 to approve that. And that'll be coming out of the bond fund, which was not the original intent. The original intent was to get out of the capital equipment fund. But given that we have adequate reserves in the bond fund, the team made a decision to get the bond fund to pay for this.
Yeah, I think just on that, that was a recommendation from our owner's rep.
Yep.
That was signed off on by our CFO and superintendent, so just to clarify that.
And that is pretty much all I had to report. Howard, do you have any questions?
You mentioned, since the bond was approved in August of last summer, the, kind of the interface between the construction people and the architect and the organization has been the FFLA committee. As we transition to the committee of the whole, you guys are going to be lucky enough that we're going to have to be able to kind of get our hands dirty a bit and look at a lot of the dollars, and not only how much we're spending, but in particular, as we go further into the project, there will be changes, and we are going to have to, depending upon which type of change they are, some changes will be approved by the superintendent and the CFO, and some changes would be coming to the board through this, through now the committee of the whole to review and decide whether we want to make those kind of modifications or not. So all seven of us are going to be really involved in this over the next, you know, many years.
I'm sorry.
I have a question. So when does the sinking fund go on the ballot, or is that still to be determined?
I'm going to defer to Tina on that. I think that's coming up later this year.
Come on down. I'm going to say twenty-two, if you don't hold me to it.
Yeah, but do you want to know when the Hold Harmless is coming?
Sure. And I guess Hold Harmless is part of the question as well?
So you must be reading the updates. The sinking fund millage actually expires in December of twenty-three, and the part of the updates over the last few months have indicated that we are now refreshing and doing the capital and tech needs assessment, which includes equipment, vehicles, buses, everything else. That's what we would normally do, especially after the significant bond passed. What's left? We know there are other things left, and of course, ongoing replacement needs, right? So that is going to be part of the work that all of you will hear at the study session slash committee of the whole in the fall. That'll inform the amount of the sinking fund. But first and foremost, I will be asking the board to look at the available election dates and targeting a date, so concurrently, we can start working on campaign and marketing and information, et cetera, with the community, and then concurrent with that, we'll be looking at what our needs are to figure out how much.
So probably not this November, then?
No, that, no, I do not anticipate the election being November. It doesn't expire till twenty-three, so there's some flexibility.
And Hold Harmless is?
Now, the operating millages, there are two, and it's not the Hold Harmless I'm concerned about, it's actually the non-homestead or the commercial property, which is the eighteen mills, where we are subject to a headly rollback, and given the positive news of property values increasing as they have been, we're limited to an inflationary rate, which forces a rollback of the millage rate, and to the point where if we go below eighteen, we just lose that money, and we don't want to do that. So we might, we will be looking at, and I've already, I already have background information for you when we have that meeting, on a restoration or perhaps just a full-out replacement of the operating millage, and it makes sense to still have them, do them both at the same time so they can track concurrently, long-term.
And, but when do those expire?
Those don't expire till December of twenty-five, but the headly rollback may have us under eighteen before that.
Ooh.
So that's because of the, how fast property values are going up. So I will love having that meeting with you. I can't wait.
And just so you know, what we normally do is we normally go, and this is all districts around the state, if the eighteen is the max, you go out for twenty, twenty-one mills, but you only bill the taxpayers at eighteen, and that allows you to kind of get around the.
That is correct, yes.
The headly issues, because the headly goes off the twenty-one, and it ratchets down, but you still only bill eighteen.
Our voters approved twenty mills, and it is going down that fast. I just have a long-term projection, as long as our property values keep going up, we won't make it till two thousand twenty-five. So I welcome that discussion, thank you for asking.
Thank you, Tina.
All right, we're board business, ratification of Bloomfield Hills Education, letter of understanding. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the letter of understanding with the Bloomfield Hills Education Association as presented.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have our union leader Phil video, if you want to say something, Phil?
Hello, Bloomfield Hills Board of Education. My name is Phil LaLiberty, president of the Bloomfield Hills Education Association. I'd like to take a moment to thank you for considering the tentative agreement that the BHEA and the district have come to concerning two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two's wages. I'd also like to thank Keith McDonald, Karen Healy, and Tina Kostick for the work that they put in to making this possible, and we continue to look forward to collaboration in the future. Thank you so much.
Okay. Board Business nine B, can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the contract with the Bloomfield Hills Association of Peri Educators as presented.
I support.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anyone? Nobody? Okay. Board C, request to approve the bid package we just talked about, can I get a motion?
Who's the lucky person's going to read all of this?
I can't read, it's too small font.
We could just move for the bid pack four, and then everything.
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid pack as following in the agenda. Is that close enough? I can't read.
Let me read the top section. I move the Board of Education award bid pack number four, which is bid C, twenty-one oh-nine, middle school, or South Hills Middle School, to the bid listed, bidders listed in each bid category below, and summarized as follows. Direct cost is twenty-five million six hundred thousand, contingency is two million six hundred thousand, architect's fees is one million six hundred thousand, and the total award amount is twenty-nine million seven hundred thousand.
Support?
I support.
Okay. Question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, we are now at D. Can I get a motion?
Sure. I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase and installation of new sound systems at Bloomfield Hills High School and the future North Middle School, with total cost not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars funded by the bond fund. This purchase utilizes a consortium bid, the Omnia contract on the Oakland School Cooperative Contracts Network.
Support?
Support.
Discussion?
And I just want to mention the sound systems at both middle school north, which we'll be using in a few years, and at the high school. The high schools and the middle school north did not get updated as part of the high school renovation back in two thousand thirteen, or in building in two thousand thirteen, so the systems are fifteen, twenty years old, and basically, they're not working anymore. They're very unreliable, and they've just reached the end of their life and need to be replaced.
And this does not include the theater, correct?
No, these are purely on the outside, these are for the fields.
Oh.
This is not in the buildings at all. This is purely for public announcing and game calling and things like that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, E is Michigan Association's School Board Self-Assessment Discussion and Next Steps. This isn't going to be a vote, just a recommendation. I know we've talked about this in the past, this is to use, and just to give some framework, you know, we, I spoke with some people from MASP, there's a self-assessment, which we could probably take on our own, and then afterwards, there is someone that can take the analysis and do some work and give us some of the analytics behind that and some suggestions. So that would be my recommendation, if it's okay with the board, to move forward with that.
In December, you think?
Yeah, within the next couple of months.
So which alternative are you suggesting? I'm sorry?
We take it on our own without a facilitator, and then it gets analyzed, we pay someone to analyze the data that comes back.
So that's the option number one?
Yes, option number one.
And not option number two?
Correct.
Okay. And, all right, well, make the motion, we can.
Well, we're not voting on it, I just want direction, and then we can move forward.
Okay.
Or a discussion, or comments.
My only thought is this, being the long timer at eight years, we as a board have done this once in my term. We went the zero-cost option, we took it all, and we got the results, and we didn't do anything with it.
Well, option one is analyzing the results.
Right.
Paying someone to analyze the results.
But the most important piece of this is not just taking it and talking about it, but it's then doing something with it. Whatever the results are, doing something such that when we go into two thousand twenty-two, we implement it. If we can do this on our own without a facilitator, great, but I just want to make sure that once we do this and we see whatever issues it does point out, that we actually take action to.
Well, it can direct, it will directly feed into the two thousand twenty-two internal board goals, which will be written in January.
Mm-hmm. The only reason I'm saying that is, as we've gone and had the superintendent evaluation, I think we saw that working with Jay worked very nicely, that he made a list of issues and then gave it back to us so that we could actually get that back to the superintendent for action.
We are going to get that.
I just want to do that for ourselves.
We're going to get someone on the back end. The point is, is we don't need someone on the front end to walk us through how to answer the questions as a facilitator. We will do that on our own.
No, I agree, it's the back end that I'm looking at.
All right, the back end, we'll see when we get the results, what the next step will be.
Well, and I also want to point out with that and with policy and all of the changes that we've been, governance changes and, you know, documents that we've been drafting, they're really only as good as our adherence to them. So, you know, I really hope that that's long after the consultant or the MASP experts has left, it's up to us to really hold ourselves accountable and implement change.
Okay.
So it's, you know, I just think that's a blanket statement on all of the stuff that we've been doing.
I'm comfortable either way, as long as we just don't do what this board, prior board did, which is do the, you know, do it, we check the box, and then we make any changes.
All right, so I'll, next steps, so I'll inform the board on the next steps on filling it out, so I'll send the link. All right, so.
Can I, can I just piggyback on this? Because I don't know, I can't remember if I sent this email, but talking about evaluations, I just want to remind everyone that, send me if you would, your choices for artifacts for December's superintendent evaluation, because we want to plan that early so that administration has plenty of lead time to gather the information that we've requested. Keep in mind that that evaluation will center in part around the district goals that were set on February first.
Okay, so we will go on to nine F. So nine F, I just want to kind of frame nine F a little bit. So our superintendent contract, which we executed in November two thousand nineteen, we signed it January two thousand twenty, contract was for two years with a one-year renewal. Best practice is to look at the compensation element of the contract at the end of the evaluation process, which you just went through. Based on Pat being highly effective, we will now look at whether or not we, as a board, want to provide Pat compensation adjustments and extension per his request to us. There is, there is some guidance, and I sent you guys all a link on what, it's not necessarily up to date, but it's the best we have.
It's twenty-twenty, it's not that out.
Twenty-twenty, but I did some searches, and I don't know if it's, but still, it's twenty-twenty. It may be a little outdated, but again, it's a good guide. And what I'm asking for is guidance tonight, whether we can let Pat come back to us with his thoughts, and then if necessary, we can engage Dana and her firm to get her input on the task based on their insight, or we can decide internally as a board, based on some feedback we get from Pat on his package. So if that's, you know, if we want to have discussion on it, if that's, then we'll just move forward with that.
I'm, can you clarify what the ask of the board is on this?
The ask of the board, if it's, if it's okay, next steps in an open meeting, that Pat comes back to us with a recommendation.
Or with a request?
A request, his request, in terms of adjustments to the contract and its compensation, along with, he's already asked us for a one-year contract renewal. We could, you know, once we get that, you know, we can discuss it as a board. If we want to get additional best practice or guidance from Dana and our law firm, we can do that, and then we will come to a conclusion.
Is this any different from any other, from putting something on, you're asking for it to go on an agenda?
Yeah.
Pat's request.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking for us the next step. So the next step is Pat will come back.
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, we're just discussing it as a board, this is the only time we can get together, and, okay, so that'll be the next step. Okay, with that.
Paul, if I could ask a question. Should we be looking in parallel while Pat is pulling his request together, so then we have, you know, instead of doing one thing after another, should we be coming up with our own range of, let's say, package adjustments for us to look at?
We could, but, you know, it was, right, I got some initial feedback from some of you, just, you know, just some best practice and talking to people, so, once we get what Pat does, then as opposed to spending money with, let's just say, a law firm or a consultant, you know, to kind of give us the data, let's see what we have, and then if we think, all